All right, it's great. Our great God, we thank you for this opportunity to gather together and to do business on behalf of the city. I thank you for each one here and for the time that they dedicate and they provide to the city. I pray that you would be with them, be with their families as they're away. And Lord, I just pray that you would go before us this evening in all that we do and all that we say, and may it bring honor to you and may it be most beneficial and efficient for the city and its citizens and all they're involved. We pray this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Paul. I think we have everyone else. Randy did let me know this afternoon that he was not going to be able to be there tonight. He had forgotten about a family obligation until his wife reminded him. So he will be here. So I think we can go ahead. Can we start early or is it low? No? No? Okay, that's fine. When you make that face with your mouth.
I never met asked it, but I kind of look at it as a public hearing. If you tell the public you're going to begin at seven, you start moving to something my thought, but that's not nothing I've read.
I agree with your thought. All right. Seven PM, we'll call the meeting to order with pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I will ask Devin to take the role call.
Randy Coffey. Minnie Galavine here.
Larry Hibbert.
Here.
Bob Porter.
Here.
Steve Wallace.
Here.
Mayor Sue Hammond.
Here.
All the town for except council member Randy Coffey.
With permission of the council, I would like to move the first item under new business, mayor's appointments, at least the portion of it that is our newest member appointment up to this time. Is that okay with everybody?
Yes.
We have Mike Connell here. He has agreed at recommendation from Kyle Box, and he gave me that recommendation. I called Mike and asked him if he would be willing to serve on the council. And after a few days of thought and consideration, he did reply to me that he would do that. So I am excited to present to you, Mike Connell, and offer to you, council, any discussion you might want to have with him. And when appropriate, if you are so moved to approve him, we'll invite him at that point to come forward to take some. Anybody have any discussion on that? If not, then there has been a motion prepared if anybody would like to follow through with that.
I move that we approve the mayor's appointment of Mike Connell to council. After receiving his oath of office, Mr. Connell took himself, that's not for me to say. Draw a line on that.
It has been moved by Bob and seconded by Larry that we approve the appointment of Mike Connell to council. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Mike, welcome. Devin is going to administer your oath of office.
John, will you be the photographer, please? Please?
I'll buy lunch tomorrow.
I'm sure you will.
It should be. You gotta look through it, though. Get it?
Auto focus.
Well, do, just take some dummy pictures real quick. Can you see it?
Okay.
Okay, all right. Right hand up, please. I'm going to say it all, and you're going to be saying this. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, the Charter and ordinances of the City of Perry, and that you will faithfully perform the duties as appointed council member according to the best of your ability to help you, God?
Yes.
Simple as that? Would you like to proceed?
Sure.
Do you have a pen today?
Yep.
If I can get one.
I got it.
I'm going to have you sign this real quick. And sorry, you can't get too rare.
Yeah, I'll figure it out.
He'll just send you a date from here. Thank you, Jack.
You're welcome.
There's always next Friday.
I didn't make a picture either.
I know, but if I get lunch, there's still always next Friday.
This is your agenda. Hopefully, we'll have some time for another day if we can catch up and then go through all those other stuff I'm handing to you.
Sure.
Very good. Welcome to the council mic. Next on our agenda, reading and approval of the minutes of the previous meetings.
And we suspend the rules, waive the reading, and approve the minutes of the June 17th, 2021 special and regular reading.
I'll support that.
All those in favor of the motion made by Larry and seconded by Steve, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. And we, I'm sorry, we skipped over the approval of the agenda. I do that all the time, and I don't know why, but I do. So let's back up and make sure that we have approval of the agenda.
I move that the agenda be adopted as per.
Second.
And this is a motion by Steve, seconded by Larry. All those in favor of that motion as read, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Did you do a vote for that?
Yeah, we did. Yeah, we did. It was Steve. Steve, no.
Did you do a vote? I got that.
Yes, we did a vote. Yes, I'm sorry. Pre-approved reports and presentations are recognizing Perry's Pride and Put Your Best Face Forward winners for July.
Thank you. Or G Sheik, because I can't remember.
This month was Bob's turn.
It's my turn. And I, I'm, are you the, I'm going to get it wrong, spirits?
Yes.
Did I get it right? Ghosts?
Yes.
Well, I picked your house because I think you have done a wonderful job over the last couple of years, cleaning it up, fixing it up, and it just looks great. So.
They get both of these shirts.
Okay, okay. So the, it's a gift card at the Darrell Hardware, and we put this down in search, right?
So this plaque is for you. And then upstairs, there is a three-year plaque in each, as each one grows up, they're added up, so you'll be added on as well.
Well, thank you very much. That's neat.
And can we get pictures?
Sure. Should I hold the plaque up?
You earned it, right?
That's right.
Good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for noticing. And we had honorable mentions of Regina Britton and Mark Honeyfett on 351 Green, Tia Johnson on 408 Lamb, Jim Segal on 202 Valley Court. I'm going to get this one wrong, too. Cory Switzlowski on 212 Meadow Lane. And Put Your Best Face Forward was the new business in town, Focal Point Landscaping or Landscape, 511 South Main Street.
Very good. Thank you for that. And who's, who has next month? Can we know? Well, make sure you check.
In my opinion, there's.
Oh, Mike, you don't even know.
Set me up already.
Devin will talk to you about that.
That means I think that since he's taken Adam's spot, we said we wouldn't do our home area that we live in. And I think Adam had.
Yeah, so he had.
Buried links.
Buried links.
I'll worry about that later.
We'll figure that out later, plenty of time. Next in our presentations, we have the utility services agreement presentation. John Souter has been communicating with Mike.
Mike Chambers.
Chambers. And he has agreed to come and share this information with us. John, did you want to give any thoughts on this before?
Well, I don't want to take anything from. So this was just recommended through Michigan Rural Water Association, through the National Association, trickle-down to us. And I'm going to let Mike explain that's just how I got in contact.
All right.
Thank you, John. I do have some information for you guys.
Oh, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll leave these ones, too, in case there's others.
But yeah, thank you very much. As John said, Michigan Rural Water endorsed our program last month, so they mailed some letters out to everybody to kind of introduce us. Appreciate the mayor and John contacting me and having me come out to your city. It's been a rough, you know, year where we haven't got to travel, so this is one of the first meetings, and it's nice to be back, to be back up here. But to give you a little bit of a background, the reason Michigan Rural Water and National League of Cities has gotten involved with this type of program is they understand infrastructure's getting older and older, especially when it comes to water and sewer lines. And one of the big issues is while the cities and the villages are doing their part to maintain the main waters and sewer lines or in the street, you have these miles and miles of lines that connect to that system that a lot of times don't get a lot of attention until there's an issue, and that's the residents' lateral water and sewer lines. And a lot of times when the resident has a frozen water line that breaks or their sewer line gets caught with tree roots, their first calls to the city, you guys will go out and make sure the main lines are working properly. Typically, they are because you're doing the maintenance and the upkeep on it. And now you're stuck to be the bearer of bad news in the resident's yard. You know, Mr. and Mrs. Resident, if you found the issue, it's on your side of the property. You're going to have to have a contractor out here and have it repaired. And residents feel upset because most of them don't even realize that they're responsible for these buried lines until these, these issues are occurring. And even the residents that do realize they're responsible, they don't have the $5,000, $6,000, $7,000 it can cost to dig them up and put the lines back the way they need to be. So that's where our program comes in. You know, first off, it's an educational program. We'll do a free public awareness campaign to all the residents in the city, letting them know these water and sewer lines are their responsibility, give them some tips on how they can keep them working properly, don't put grease down your drains, that kind of stuff. And then secondly, is give them a chance to transfer that risk from themselves over to our program through a low-cost monthly warranty. Now, the nice part for the city, it's a fully turnkey program. We handle all the marketing, all the billing, all the customer service, all the claims. There's no cost or anything for the city to participate. And then we share a portion of all the revenue that's generated from the warranty sales back with the community as well. The nice part for your residents is if the city does decide to participate, it's completely optional. So it's nothing that they have to enroll in, it's just something that simply becomes available. But if they choose to enroll, we have three products that they can, they can choose from. The external water line coverage, and that'll cover the point of their external water line from where it enters the home all the way to where it connects to the curb stop or the shut-off. Covers everything from leaking lines, slow-running lines, broken lines, frozen lines, any kind of disruption in their water service. There's no deductible or anything for the residents. There's no service fees. We also don't do any pre-inspections, and there's no lifetime or annual limits for them as well. The sewer line will cover from the point where it enters the home all the way to where it connects to the main, and that'll cover everything from a simple clean-out, something that gets flushed down there, or there's tree roots, just needs to be rooted out, all the way up to fully replacing that line as well, including if there, any kind of public sidewalk needs to be disturbed or the street, all that's covered for the residents as well. Same thing with the water line, no deductibles or service fees or anything like that. And then the last product's the in-home plumbing coverage, and that'll cover all the lines inside the home, including toilets, faucets. And like I said, they can choose whichever ones they want to cover. But once they're enrolled, if they have any issues with their line, all they do is make one call to us. We have a 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week US-based call center, and then we'll dispatch a local licensed plumber. That's another huge benefit of our program as well, is we only use contractors from here in the area to do the work. A couple of reasons. First off, we just want to keep the dollars locally in the community, but more importantly, the local contractors, they know what the codes are here. They're going to make sure all the permits are pulled and everything's fixed the way the city wants it to be done. Now, as for the way we market the program, it's all done through direct mail, so you don't have to worry about your residents getting calls or anything like that. We never call anybody twice a year, once in the spring and once in the fall. We'll go ahead and mail that educational letter out to all the residents, let them know the program's available. Before we ever mail it, though, we provide it to the city. You have an opportunity to review it, make sure you're happy with all the language that's in it, because it will say the National League of Cities and the City of Perry want to make you aware of this program. But once it's approved, only once it's approved, we mail it out to your residents. Currently, we have 1,000 communities across the country participating. I think there's around 30 or so here in Michigan. We've offered the program through the National League of Cities since 2010. Just to give you a little idea of how, you know, how often this happens, in the past three years alone, we've paid over $500 million across the country fixing water and sewer lines. Michigan's one of the states we do a lot of work in. One of our partners is Royal Oak down near Detroit. We've already done a million dollars just in their community alone. Caleen was one of our first partners in the state. We're up with almost a million dollars there as well that we've paid to fix the lines. So it's something that's really helped the residents out. It is A-plus rated with the Better Business Bureau. We have a 98% customer satisfaction rating. And then twice in the past six years, we were awarded the Torch Award from the BBB. Let's give it to the top companies for business ethics. And then, as I mentioned earlier, too, there is a portion of all the revenue that's generated that will come back to you guys. So 50 cents per month per product that's sold, we provide that back to the city. You guys can use that, you know, money however you choose. Some of our partners have set up funds for low-income families that might need help with their water bill, or if they have a line break and don't have our coverage. Others have put it into an infrastructure project. That's up to the city how you want to use those funds. So that's the main highlights of the program. Just like to answer any questions for you.
When we spoke on the phone, or maybe it was in an email, I don't remember exactly, but I thought you also mentioned that there was coverage available for excess water usage bill. Could you talk about that?
Yes, we have that program as well, so that's our leak protection program. And the way that works, a lot of times when they do have a leaky toilet or a leaky, you know, line in their, and their water bill ends up, you know, being more than what's, what typical is, they'll look to the city to do, you know, a write-off or some kind of adjustment for them. So with our program, that would replace any kind of adjustments that you would have. We would end up paying that water bill, whatever is over their typical monthly average, would all be paid, you know, by us directly to the city. No deductible or anything for the residents. Also, basically eliminates you guys having to write that bad debt off and dealing with the issue of it. So we handle all the aspects of that program as well.
I just wanted to make sure I understood that.
Yeah, that's right.
What would you need from the, from the city administration?
So for the, the line warranty program, the first part I talked, pretty much everything's handled by us. The only thing we need is permission to use your name and logo in the marketing materials. So once that's approved, there's a marketing agreement that just says that, then everything else is handled by, by us.
So that's monstered on what I see in the email, was the agreement that you were supporting.
Yes, correct, yes.
Is there an open enrollment time, or can residents sign up for this anytime?
Yeah, they can sign up anytime throughout. We'll do the mailings just to let them know, but they can call us at any time and enroll anytime they want to.
What's the, excuse me, the typical cost for the people you have enrolled right now? What's, I know you can get a library of things they can select from, but what is it? So the cost to an.
Yeah, in the state of Michigan, everybody has the same rate here in the states. So for the water line, it costs $6.75, or $6.49 per month. The sewer line is $8.49 per month. And then the in-home plumbing and drainage coverage is $9.99 per month.
Thank you.
And that pay, the payment, does that funnel through the city?
So on the service line program, that comes directly to us.
Right to you, okay.
We handle all the billing, everything like that.
So the premiums for whatever coverage they choose is handled with you?
With all, through us.
How do you get the average bill if a president has a over or above, you know?
Yeah, for the water program. Yeah, so we would work directly with the city for that.
With the city to get a year's worth of.
Exactly, a year, exactly, it's a year average. And then that program does work a little differently with that one if we want to do that. That's typically of just about a dollar a month for your residents, and that is something that would be added to the water bill.
Okay.
So they're kind of separate programs that sort of come together and make sure everything's covered.
As a president that would take on this program, I love the idea that you're using I just know that they're very busy, and it's hard for, to get them. So are, are you paying them the standard that our residents would be on the same timeline as anybody else that would be paying them?
Correct, yeah, we'll pay them their rate. And that's one of the big benefits we get from the program, is a lot of times if you are just a resident and you call, they're busy, they might not get to you. But since we provide them such a large volume of work, they're more than likely going to do our jobs, you know, first. So now that when the residents, because we guarantee, when the resident files a claim with us, we ask the contractor to contact that resident within one hour, and then we guarantee that we'll be there, you know, within a 24 to 48-hour window. Because it's something, when you have a sewer or water line issue, it's something you just can't, you can't live without, you can't wait a couple of weeks for that to be.
But that's the situation.
Exactly.
I mean, they're, they're very busy. We are actually limited on plumbers in this area.
And we will, you know, depending on how many, we want to get, you know, three or four different contractors, so if there's not a lot of them that are qualified here, we will branch out. You know, we'll try to stay as close as we can to the community, but we, we want to make sure first and foremost that the residents are, are taken care of when they have an issue.
Right. Other questions? Just question? Mike, I think we're set. Thank you for coming in tonight. We will put this on our agenda for the next meeting for council to decide.
Perfect.
And then we'll be in touch.
And the PowerPoint is, there's my contact information, so as you're mauling over, if you have any questions, just recall me or email me.
Okay. Great.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Have a good night, everyone.
Next on our agenda are public comments. Do we have any comments from the public?
Is there any plans for like recycling in the community here for like, you know, pen and glass and plastic?
Directly in Perry or Morris like we had for a while.
I know Morris doesn't have any.
Right, and, and that's correct. We don't have any plans here. However, the city has made a donation to Langsberg recyclers. Langsberg is, what, seven miles to the northwest? And they have quite an aggressive recycling program. They've had a place for a long time.
Right.
And they, we do post their times that they're open and, and a list of what they accept, glass, tin, newspapers, magazines, whatever. It's posted on our website, and it's also posted on the board at Carl's, so you can get that information there.
Sir, is there one at Perry here? We don't have one, hopefully right here.
There is, yeah.
Okay. You don't have to tell me.
No, wait, no, I will tell you, because I was a part of that committee that organized that. And we did have it in place. It was a cooperative program with the Village of Morris, Perry Township, and the City of Perry. And it went very well. The costs were covered by the money that came in initially. We divided the cost to set it up between each of the three entities. And then as donations were made, it was covering the costs of, because you have to pay to recycle. It's not a money-making venture like it was at the beginning.
I always loved, that's about it.
Yeah, but at Morris, that was, that was all three of us at that site over at Morris. And we had, after a few years, an awful lot of people who dumped their trash in the bin. And when the company found more trash than recycling, we had to pay $400 to dump that instead of $200 to have it be recycled, which then put us out of budget.
Right.
And so we did a lot of advertising as far as what people can and can't put in there, begged people not to do stuff. The only thing we didn't do was have someone standing there watching over people's shoulders when they would put their stuff in, because that wasn't in our budget either, to pay someone to do that. So after about a year of really struggling with that, we just had to close it down. So that's why we don't. John?
So about two years ago, or when that change took place, I got a quote from Granger to do curbside pickup.
Yeah.
That's going to be roughly, probably just a little bit over half of what we pay for trash. So I think the trash bill monthly is about $8. It's going to, let's just say $5 a month to have a smaller recycling cart, but that was two, two years ago's dollars. And it, but it was an all-inclusive, the whole town had to participate, just like the cans that were distributed, the curvy carts.
Yeah.
So it's a similar thing to that, to have it door-to-door. So it would have been an additional $4.55 a month on the utility bill to have that in, in the city for them to pick it up.
Right.
And it was also close that we put it up at the DPW, and my concern is that it was going to turn into the same thing, because I can't man it the whole time. So that's from my standpoint.
Yeah, okay. I just, I just thought I'd bring that up.
Absolutely.
I hate, we hate throwing stuff in the trash.
Absolutely. Yeah, and Langsberg does, I think right now, maybe they're open once a month on a Saturday for half a day. And I'm thinking it's the 12th of July, from nine to one.
Okay.
And, but you might want to look at that flyer online just to see what they take. They do a good job. I hope that answers your question.
It does, it does.
Thank you for asking that.
You're welcome.
Any other public comments? We will move on to communications. Devin has no communications today. So moving on to mayor and department head reports, if you don't mind, I'll go first. Last meeting, we had someone from the public, someone who uses the library in town, ask about being able to park in the city lot behind the librarian and enter from the back. And we told her we would check on that, maybe what a video doorbell would be or some, something to that effect. So I talked to John about it, and John and I went down and looked at the building, and there are a lot of little hidey holes in the back of that building. So we can't just leave that door unlocked. That just wouldn't be secure at all. But leaving the door locked and having some sort of video surveillance with perhaps a remote door unlock for the librarian on duty to be able to do that from their desk up front is what I've talked to John about. And John is in the process of checking on those costs. He's talked to a few places. Is there anything you want to share with us on that?
I can briefly.
Okay.
I'll just come off.
Oh, yeah?
I'll hang out.
All right.
So I got ADT to give me a quote on camera inside away for them, because it's not visible from where they're at, and they were concerned about security. So some cameras to see, and if people exit that way as a common entry-exit, there's like four or five other rooms back there that they can get in. And so tomorrow morning at nine o'clock, I have another guy that the school uses, or a company down in Jackson coming up, that they use to buzz people in and out of the school facility. These are commercial types of things, and it seems to me a commercial application rather than a residential style. So that's why I'm going that direction, unless I'm directed otherwise. I have no idea how much it's going to be used, and the 10 years I've been here, the door's never been opened, so, or unlocked. But it's just my.
When John and I were up there, we did talk to Carol, the librarian, and she thought it was a great idea as long as the security of it was in place. I also communicated with the district librarian, Jamie, and she was in favor of that as well, again, as long as the security is in place. While John and I were there, I did ask him if he would order some signs for the parking lot there that say "City Parking," maybe even "Free City Parking." And also for the parking lot behind what used to be the bank where Central Pharmacy is now, because neither of those lots have that kind of signage on them. And we have been having some complaints from downtown businesses about not enough parking. Well, when John and I were up there, there was two cars in one lot and three cars in the other lot, so a whole lot of parking that was just empty. So maybe if we can do some signage that would direct people to those slots, it might help them. So. John?
The signs are on their way. I don't have them on my hands yet.
You go through door and both?
Yeah.
The other thing I just wanted to report on, I, last time I had told you we had not received any applications, viable applications for the city treasurer position. We have now received three. Two of them really were not the criteria that we need. So I've communicated back with those people, thanked them for their applications. But the, the third one, we're going to interview someone tomorrow. So yay. We also have two finalists in the running for the deputy superintendent of the DPW. And we'll be conducting some further interviews with those two on the ninth of this month. So I think we're getting close on that. I think that's everything I had. So John, if you have more to report on?
Yeah, I'll just make it real quick. Paving was gonna, was scheduled to be done on the 25th and we got a little bit of rain. So that, put that off. They finished this evening, so there'll be some cleanup restoration, I'm hoping. The signs probably won't be gone before next week, but most every, the streets will all be open and freshly paved. If people see us around painting a lot of paint on the ground, we're still working on the GIS project that, that we got the grant for. So you'll see blue and green in various areas of town. We'll be moving up in the northeast section here in the next few weeks doing that. We're, we're probably close to halfway done locating all the physical assets. So it's been going okay. Other than that, just DPW's day-to-day work and.
Streets look wonderful. I've had a lot of people express their appreciation.
Unless you have any questions for me?
Anybody? Kyle, would you have anything you'd like to share with us tonight?
So do. Can you know everyone?
Yeah. Oh, been busy reading the union contract that came back. So that was all kinds of fun. But got that all set for you folks to talk about your old business. Find any anomalies or anything that needs to be changed from what was sent to us? Been talking with Dory about proceeding with national out and how that's going to look. And we've talked about modifying a few things and changing some things up a little bit to try and not only accommodate for the era of the pandemic, but also for just trying to re-idealize, re-bring it back to life somewhat, I guess. So we'll see what kind of options we can come up with. But not sure how in-depth we'll get this year, but we'll definitely delve into it deeper next year for sure. I wanted to give you folks a heads up that I am on a subcommittee with Chiwasi 911 and emergency, Chiwasi Emergency Management. They are trying to consolidate the activation of all the tornado sirens that are in Chiwasi County. And by doing that, they need to utilize a very tall tower as a transmitter to all the individual towers if they're in the scope or range of the path of whatever the storm that is pending or coming into our county. It won't activate all the sirens, but North Shore, the Diddars, they, they pretty much have the corner of the market for all of the sirens in the country, I believe. So they're lacking some promptness because they're a little behind. But anyway, that all being said, our, our siren actually is equipped for this technology to actually be activated at central dispatch and then sent out to the individual sirens that would be in the path of the storm and that would alleviate any individual sirens needing to be set off by townships, municipalities. Our actual siren that was set off Saturday is set off by the fire department. And they can do it remotely, but somebody has to actually physically do that. And while someone will actually physically do that at central dispatch, that is always a man to post in the county. They don't have to go outside to go check on something. They don't have to go in a vehicle. They're right there at the council and we can hit the button. So we're trying to do that. Going back to the tower, we have the tower in the county. That thing is 400 feet tall and they are looking to utilize that. We own that tower. We own the property. We lease it to American Tower. And they are looking to get in contract, they being the county, looking to get in contract with the city and also American Tower to utilize that for a transmitter that won't affect any of the lease agreement or any of the entities that are up there now. And that would be something that North Shore and American Tower can hash out. It's details beyond me. But anyway, we're working on that currently. They may be coming. They being the director of 911 and/or the director of emergency management. They'd be coming to talk with you folks about that agreement and give you some more details that I can't provide you. But just let you know that we're looking to proceed with that and see if that's something that is feasible for all the entities involved. Any rough questions about that and might be able to answer? We've been working on this for about four years and with the change and emergency managers and some other changes, it just has kind of gotten delayed and pushback. But we're kind of at the point where we know what we need and we know we need to talk about a tower our size to be able to broadcast out to all Chiwasi County. We are looking to increase the amount of cameras we have here for security or surveillance at City Hall. The IT department at the school has always helped us. We piggyback off their system. We have access to their cameras. We can view them remotely. I can review, I can view them on my phone if I need to. But they are the, they hold the infrastructure. They have the server for all the cameras. And they've installed all the cameras that we currently have. We're looking to do an additional couple, I think two cameras at this point, just so you know. Get a better angle of the south parking lot, police cars are parked, but also the west parking lot, the Veterans Memorial Park and the pavilion area. Also, all from inside City Hall looking out. Other than that, it's, it's been a long month and a half, but I'm happy to announce to you folks that we're going to have a night shift, a full-time night shift starting next week. Officer Lutz, who you met at the last meeting that I was at, started on his own last night, working night. And then I got the good news that Officer Royal is going to be returning from his leave next Wednesday. So we'll have two officers on days and two officers on nights. So.
Great.
Yes. It's been a long month and a half, a couple months. So. Any questions for me?
I have one for you, Kyle.
Yes, sir.
Can we, is it possible to add cameras to Jubilee Park?
There are two in Jubilee Park already.
Okay, because I was going to, I was going to ask you to come to one of our parks meeting and talk about that. Because I know John's concerned. Somebody crushed one of the cans and stuff. We're not going to catch everybody, but maybe if we could do something with the new equipment. Someday it'll get here. It is delayed for 20 weeks or something. But I just don't want, I want to nip it in the bud. You know, I was once a hoodlum, so I understand.
Yeah, you're creative.
Young adults do stupid things. So that's all.
Yeah, we can certainly sit down with Zach and see what options we have.
See what we can do something.
Yeah. He's got all kinds of new technology, even making the stuff antiquated that we currently have. I was just talking to him yesterday. It's like, are you giving me, we've jumped ahead that far in a year and a half. But anyway, yeah, we can definitely talk to Zach.
Okay.
Sure. Anything else? All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle. And Devin, I think, has a department head report.
I do. Most of it is just going to be kind of a recap of the motions and the changes that we're doing as we're moving forward with COVID. I had mentioned that I had concerns on how the municipality building would have to be run under my OSHA. It did take them a while to research it, but as of May 24th, I was able to confirm that my OSHA had changed their rules and policy. The restrictions have came off on us as a building. My OSHA is following OSHA. And what that means in a real light summary is that the healthcare still has stricter rules. But all of the, the policy that we had to keep, the temperature checks and the self-monitoring and all of those restrictions that we had to make sure that we were keeping everything safe have been lifted. So when you notice, when you come into City Hall, we made sure that we told you if you don't feel good, please don't come in. We figured that was obvious. And we're still telling you how to wash your hands. But that's about all we have left in the building. The, the common sense of what we've learned is what has stayed on the doors. And of course, we all know council made a motion. Reservations can be made as of today to, you can, this is more used for a meeting room. But council chambers can be reserved. The community center on the third floor can now be reserved. So you can call our office and reserve those. And the capacity is, there's, we are fine. Thank you. This is wonderful. I am used to the white table. I agree, Mindy, but it does feel normal again. It really does feel normal. It was nice putting the chairs up today, getting it ready for the community kind of. So I wanted to do that. And then last I wanted to bring up, the city has appointed me on the SADA board and I attend monthly there. And it's very preliminary talk. There has been some disagreements with the current bylaws and different things like that of what municipalities have voting rules and different things like that. It's been around just over 20 years. And there are other municipalities that want a little bit more rights. And so there's discrepancy of whether that should be changed or not. So in the meantime, what has been recommended is it become its own authority. And we've had a gentleman at a state level that deals with public transit come in and presented to us and gave us some rough information, who to call, who to compare county-wise. Big cities, sometimes they even have authorities in areas of their city and such. I'm not totally opposed. If you'd like, I could do a little bit of research and pass it on to you and given what the information they gave to us. My concern that I gave to the questions was how is it going to, is it going to hinder the residents that the city of Perry is already taken care of by a military that we are currently running? Because if you are not a member of SADA currently as a municipality, so for example, our township can you, the residents can use it, but they are charged a higher rate. And so you benefit, you're still paying as a city resident, but you get the better deal and such. So my questions are, why are we doing this? Is this just to keep a board happy or are we doing it so that we're offering it to the whole county? And again, if it goes to an authority, that means that it will go through the whole county and everybody will pay a miller for it. But instead of the city going every two to four years, as typically is what happened, the county would do it. So I'm on the understanding that just to get all the pieces in the legals and follow through, it'll take a year before any kind of consideration would go. And then although we've heard, the rumor is, is that county would support this because they would have to get it on the ballot and go through it, that doesn't mean we would get the support and that it would go through. But I'm understanding if it got that far, it would go to a miller as an authority and would fail. That we would make precautions that nothing would change. We would just stay as we are. And that's a real light summary of a very complicated situation. But I wanted to report what is currently going on at SADA. Otherwise, I find they run a very tight ship, a very good business, very similar to the government that we run, just a different authority or a different board.
Does anybody have any questions for Devin about that? Thank you for that. Just keep us posted. Joanne Belting, our treasurer, was going to give us a report tonight, but she's not feeling well. If you do have any of the documents that she prepared, I wasn't sure if she was able to get those out before she went home or not. If you have anything that looks like it might have come from Jo because it's got all kinds of numbers on it, just hang on to it and she'll report on it another night. Nothing of any urgency. How about committee reports? Any of our standing committees want to report anything tonight?
I'll give a quick update on Finance and Ordinance Committee. We did meet with our city attorney, Justin English, early this week, actually. And he is in the process of drafting a proposed ordinance revision that would allow us to have some greater enforcement opportunity with our, in particular, zoning ordinances right now that we've been talking about for a number of weeks and months at this point. So we're awaiting that proposed ordinance so the committee can take a look at it and hopefully get us moving forward.
Very good. Thank you. Anybody else?
On the Business Affairs and Technology Committee, we did have a meeting subsequent to our last council meeting and town hall meeting with the businesses. And at this point in time, we've taken a direction that we're going to focus on trying to engage our businesses through our Events Activity and Events Committee. Reaching out, actually Sue has sent a email out to all the businesses trying to encourage their involvement, participation in the events, sharing the list of events as we know them today with, with the businesses. And at the same time, have asked for their input and we're in the process of developing a website page on our website that would allow businesses to link to their website information. And actually sent out a form soliciting their feedback and approval to include them on our website. And I believe we're starting to get a few of those back.
We got, we got four back the very next day, but now they've slowed down, but it was exciting.
They'll trickle, they'll trickle in. And so in, in any case, that's, we're still trying to move forward with business engagement. It's just a little slower than I think some of us may have hoped.
I will just invite anyone that's interested to attend the Events Committee. That will be on July 12th, 11th. And we are having a light lunch provided by Ronham and Catering. Just be sandwiches and stuff. Anybody else? Committee reports?
I'll wait till next month when I have the minutes to present.
Okay.
Then I can follow up cheap sheet.
Good. Thank you.
I just have one question. Will the sandwiches have like cookie cutter or the stars?
He did not mention that he was doing cookie cutter bread. Never seen him utilize that, so most likely not.
That's awesome.
Yeah. Okay, next on our agenda, presentation and approval of the bills.
I'm hoping we approve the bills as presented and that payment be authorized.
Second. Motion by Larry and second by Mindy to pay the bills as presented. All those in favor of that motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Now moving to the old business, and Kyle mentioned this in his presentation, possible adoption of the police union contract. We have talked with the labor attorney, Tom Gudere. We have talked with the labor attorney, Tom D'Addarian. We have talked about this a couple of different times, but now we've had this to review. Each council member except Mike have had this longer. Is there any discussion, any questions for Kyle? Or anything that we need to talk about or bring to anyone's attention before we vote on this?
I didn't see anything other than what we talked about when the attorney was here personally, but I made this sound.
Just a question for Kyle. Are you comfortable and okay with the agreement as it's been proposed?
Very much, yes.
Anybody else? Then we'll look to entertain a motion from council.
I move that the Perry City Council adopt and ratify the tentative agreement reached with the Police Officers Labor Council for a new collective bargaining agreement to commence July 1st, 2021, and will terminate June 30th, 2024. Be a further move that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign the new collective bargaining agreement on behalf of the city.
Second.
It's been moved by Steve and seconded by Bob that the council approve the contract with the Police Officers Labor Council. All those in favor of that motion as read by Steve signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by nay. Motion passes.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have a few new appointments. That kind of stuff happens when the council seats change. So in addition to our new council member, we also have an appointment, a reappointment really. Deanna Shaw has served on the zoning court of appeals and has agreed to continue to serve there with a term that will expire July 2024. And if someone would want to, if there's no discussion on that, if someone's ready to make that motion to approve her appointment, we can do that one first and then go on to the rest. I think that. Go ahead.
You haven't done one.
I move that we approve Deanna Shaw as the mayor's reappointment to the zoning board of appeals. The term to expire July 2024.
Second.
Booked by Mindy and seconded by Bob to approve the appointment of Deanna Shaw as indicated by Mindy. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Again, because of the changes in the city council seats, we now need to look at the new appointments for the standing committees. And I won't indicate those because they're part of this motion, or at least they're there. So whoever is willing to make the motion to approve those, if you want to read those, standing committee and the people that would serve on those. And these are not all of the standing committees. It's only the ones that had to be changed.
I move that we approve the mayor's standing committees as follows. Finance and Ordinance, Lambert, Gelbvee, Kyle. Parks and Properties, Porter, Kyle Coffey and George Dunn. Public member personnel, Gelbvee, Kyle Coffey. Labor negotiations, Lambert, Wallace and Kyle.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion as read by Larry and seconded by Bob indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you very much for that, and thank you again.
Yes.
Now we're on to possible approval of tractor purchase. John, you want to walk us through that?
Okay. So what you have in front of you is for a John Deere 1025 subcompact tractor. We started this back in maybe March of 2021. So I got a grant for this unit. Worked with Lee Ann when she was here and we submitted all this paperwork. And so off the total price, we got a grant for 35% off of it, which comes to $10,900. So we'll have to approve the entire amount. But I'll tell you how I went about it and everything that I did. The wording in the grant and what I put in the budget. So we're using a lawnmower right now with a snow blower on it. The reason that I picked this particular tractor is because the size of the snow blower fits our sidewalks. The others are a couple inches wider. Now, there might be a little bit less on the tractor itself, but when you have 48-inch sidewalks and 50-inch wide, I'm, okay. So there's, that's one of the reasons why I went with this. I did get three bids on it. The other two just didn't compare enough to, for our needs. Now, this here, as most of you know about, these subcompacts, I think in 10 years, we'll still be able to get vast majority of the dollar value out of this the way we take care of it. The one we have now, it's 2004. It's just a lawn mower slash lawn tractor. And it let me down at the big snow, the last final big snow of the season. I had to go out and borrow from the school to get sidewalks done. So I was a little, I'm not saying a new one is gonna.
Not break.
I'm just saying that something that's 16, 17 years old, spend its days in the sun, sometimes, you know, there's a time to upgrade. So that's where I'm at with this. So I'll read a little bit about what I, or tell. Using this, the reason that I'm stepping away from, I can get a lawn tractor, garden tractor, but it wouldn't have a loader, wheelbase durable, wouldn't be four-wheel drive. But in comparison, the wheelbase, the width is the same. The wheelbase on this is just a touch longer. And I feel that it can handle doing what, everything we need to do with the interest in the parts and whatnot. So what I put in there, and this is, I feel DPW can handle this without much extra strain and do something for the community, was downtown and whatnot to help the businesses when we get four inches or more of snow. Unless council objects and, you know, we haven't been doing anything other than cleaning the on-street park. Sometimes it's hard for some of the students and we've went down here when the, not just the city plows, but the county trucks, when they plow in some of the crosswalks going up to the elementary school. So this is going to be more, that's the reason that it's coming with a cab on it, so we can spend a little more time out taking care of some of these things. I guess in a little more comfort and there'd be more of a desire to get it done. A lot of traffic comes from Perry Oaks down through the park. We haven't been doing that sidewalk in 10 years. I was going to start doing that to give, just, just snow blow it off. And that was trying to, you know, if you guys are interested because it is a little more than a lawn tractor. But with the grant, I felt that we're at the same money. It's roughly $20,000 for a lawnmower, a gas lawnmower that's going to last about half the amount of time as this subcompact diesel. So that's my logic behind it. I feel that it's sound. But if anybody has any.
I've got a real quick question, John.
Okay.
The broom, is it angle broom?
Yes, it does angle. Yep. And we started using that some on like these lighter snows. It does a whole lot better job and clears it down. So with a little bit more horsepower and a bigger broom, it'll clear off those nuisance snows a lot. And so that's some of my logic on that.
I'm just curious, I have nothing around against John Deere. Did you look at other manufacturers like Kubota or Coyote and stuff like that? Just for price comparison at all?
I did. So I got a price. You want me to tell you all the brands or? I, Kubota, I priced a couple of years ago when I was thinking about this and they couldn't give me a, a snow blower narrow enough.
Okay.
At the time to be, and if I went down to a lawnmower, they could. A lawnmower size. And I, I didn't feel that it was, we weren't gaining enough to do it for the cost. The other ones, you know, they're still, they're all a couple inches wider. Either the broom is real wide or the snow blower is still not going to fit down the sidewalk like the, John Deere has a 47-inch wide and everybody else is 48, 50 inches with the skids out.
No, that makes sense. I just was curious if.
I did price Mahindra. I did not get a Coyote bid and I priced it out. It just, some of the things about them didn't, didn't seem to fit. You know, number one, we have a Ford currently. It's a bigger one, but I can't get parts for it anymore. And with the keep changing of manufacturers buying and selling, there's one brand that has stayed by themselves. And so I'm not, I'm not a green fan. I'm actually red, but so I'm, I'm just. The number, the number of dealers for John Deere, I got one in Williamston, I got one in Corona, and I can get stuff.
Yeah, John Deere makes a very good machine. This other two I mentioned also make a good machine. I just want to make sure, and I agree with you 100% to keep a little narrower for the sidewalks. That's all. Though I would, I would look at the three that I mentioned. The one you got a price for and the other two, I would, the other ones are, I'll leave my opinion. You can fill in the blank.
So the other orange one at the time, it was going to be roughly this price. Through this grant, it went through the Michigan bid system and they just accepted what it was through that.
Oh, okay.
So I did, other than, you know, if you guys want me to go out and get all these bids, but looking at it logically, I just can't find a one-for-one on everything. It's just not working out that way for me and I, you know, I don't, I spent enough time on it and.
Fair enough.
Do we salt, John, do we salt any of the walks?
Yes. Not all of them.
The ones that we broom or we plow?
Yes, some of those. Not some of them. Like up around the building here, we do, you know, the entryways, the library. I don't salt down all the way to the end of Polly Street, but just pretty much around the building here and as needed on sidewalks.
So do we have a spreader for this that will work on this machine? A drop spreader?
I don't have a spreader. We do it by hand.
Might want to just look into the drop spreader.
Drop spreader, yeah. Eep, bulk or a salt dog.
Okay.
I really like the thinking that it sounds like it could be a benefit for the businesses and the community with the kids, you know, so, yeah.
Well, with a better piece of equipment, I feel it's more reliable and.
If you get too small and you work it too hard, then you may have a very hard.
Right. And that's where we're at with the one we have. I can't really do more because it's, we've tried doing a little more and it keeps, things happen, so. So I guess, I don't know what, you have a motion in there for them?
So I guess my question to you is, I have the dollar amount of $31,410. I rounded it up because it was a small amount.
Yes.
With the salt spreader, would that be a side item? Or is this something that maybe should hold off?
Yeah, I'll just deal with that later.
Okay.
I really believe that the city would benefit from a drop spreader. Bob and I both in the business and it's, it's just safety.
Okay.
It's just a safety issue and I don't quite remember the prices, but I don't think it's going to be enough.
They're not too bad. And the drop spreaders have come a long way in the last 10 years.
They just took on the 3.20.
Yeah. There's several different manufacturers and then you don't have the spinner cleaning it everywhere.
Right. It just drops it straight down. So one of them that we use at the university, you put it on a three-point hitch, you back right into the salt pile, the spreader drops, acts as a scoop. Picks it back up and then acts as a drop spreader when you engage it.
Oh.
Does John Deere even want to?
No.
As an aftermarket.
I was hoping we could just get a little.
They may sell one.
You could probably, yes, and you could probably still get the MyDeal contract since we're a municipality, we still could get the MyDeal.
Why don't we talk to John Deere and just, where you're getting this and just see how badly they want to do this deal.
If I may, John, I would also like to give you our equipment purchaser's name, who happens to be a Perry resident. And he can give you some, some of what the university pays for.
Okay.
Yeah.
Which is my idea.
Can I backtrack on one thing on that though? I mean, we're still staying with the tractor with the John Deere. It's my understanding that the grant is approved.
The grant is approved for this.
Because of John Deere. We can't veer off on the product at this point. Just the spreader that we're speaking of.
It got bundled up ahead of the budget so that we were ready to go. Just a future attachment.
Great. Okay.
If, you know, if things had to change, then we would lose that grant because of this.
Well, address that as a separate entity.
Yes. You, I, I'm assuming for the, get to the spreader, you probably have money in your snow budget that we could perhaps purchase a implement for that.
Yeah, we can, I can visit that after, you know, this. I'm sure it's going to be okay. So.
Council, do you have any further questions for John about the possible approval of tractor purchase? If not, is someone interested in making a motion?
If, if the spreader gets added on to the grant, is 35?
It can't. Okay. It's already signed, sealed and delivered. The grant, the $10,900 is, is sitting there waiting at USBA. Once we order it, get it, then they'll send us the money.
So we'll have to address the attachment in a future.
Sure. And this dollar amount of $31,400 that we have that, just Joanne's not here, I can't.
Yes.
John, I've already counted for that.
You put that into your budget. And then accounted. We work together. So it's in capital outlay through Motor Pool in 661 for that. And then, you know, then the grant money will go back in and offset it.
Are you going to sell the old Ford tractor and the lawnmower?
The Ford, we're not because I still use that because I can't get one that's got enough horsepower to run the eight or seven-foot finish mower. That'll fit down a sidewalk. And so I'm still using that out of the lagoon.
Okay. The correct ground, the net cost to the city when everything is done is just slightly over $20,000.
Yes, $20,508 to me. So that's.
I move that we allow the superintendent, DPW, John Soder, to purchase the John Deere utility tractor from Deere and Company not to exceed $31,410.
Second. Moved by Larry, seconded by Steve. As the motion made by Larry, all those in favor of that motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Okay, let's talk about a dump truck. John?
Okay. So stuff is getting backed up so, so far. So what I'm, what I'm proposing and looking at here, the truck we have is, is starting to bust out in, in serious ways, the little F-350 that we use. So we've been saving for this. This is going to be a lease payment deal. So we're going to get a F-350 four-wheel drive. The one we have now is two-wheel drive and it's not the best in part of the year. So it's, it's not getting a full Western plow on it. It's getting the mounts and controls because we already have two plows. It's, it's a backup truck to, so I have a little redundancy if something happens. So this is getting a small box on it. The truck was broken down. I think that the truck ended up being just over thirty thousand for the, the cabin chassis. And then, uh, to put a, I, I originally put in the budget to put a stainless dump box on it and prices have went up so much that I've had to drop back to a painted steel box. They, that's just that. And the, so, it's bid on a Ford. I've tried bidding on Chevys before. I didn't bid on a Dodge or anything. Um, our dealer is a mile away or less and it, to me, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense, uh, to try to drive all over, um, the, the company, Truck Trailer Specialties down in Howell. It's going to do the box. Um, their Michigan bid on the box. So, um, they're working with us as much as they can. The truck, if we do order it, is probably going to be the end of January, first of February before it gets here. The box is, uh, thirty-two weeks out plus four to six weeks installation. So, that's why I'm doing it like right now as soon as the budget is fresh. And we've, we've been leasing, I think we've leased, this will be the third one that we've leased and I think the police department's leased, uh, three cars through, through the Ford deal like this. So, they kind of bundle it all up. I tell them what we need on the stuff and so I've eliminated all of the things that we don't need to get, to keep the price in here. So, it's basically a direct replacement of what we have that was bought back in two thousand and six. And that box has fallen off the truck. So...
So, the lease payment for this is really, um, the, the same as a lease payment that we've been making that we won't have anymore, is that right?
Right. Last year, I didn't do any extra stuff in Motor Pool. I just let it all set and we saved the money. We, we paid everything off that we had.
Yeah.
So, there's a few things we need this year to get going again. And then, I think most of the fleet, the, the next purchases are going to be, uh, gigantic if we... I'm talking dump, big dump trucks and sewerback trucks and that type of stuff, so...
These numbers include then the truck and outfitting it with the dump box and things that you...
Yes, so there's a, a total, a grand total of fifty-three thousand. There is interest annually on, on leasing it. So, um, I, I think I figured it was, uh...
It came up with fifty-six thousand eight hundred eighty-four ninety-two.
Right, so that'd be like...
Multiplied it by your eighteen.
Okay.
Times three is what I did, John. And would you agree with that number then?
Yeah, the interest is going to be, I, I don't know. They got six percent. I, I, it come in, the, the grand total come in. I budgeted for nineteen thousand three hundred a year for the lease payment and it's eighteen thousand nine sixty, so, um, but if I went with a stainless box, I would put it over. So, I, I had to make some concessions on that. And this painted box, we went and looked down at them up here at the, the dealership and I, I feel it is, it doesn't have the nooks and crannies that the other one has to hold salt.
Can you put another spreader on this? A Togian spreader, no, right?
No. No. We'll, we'll probably, it'll be used to chip, chip brush in some... I, I use this, I use the, the F-three-fifties more now because, you know, you, you deal with a, a five yarders, a hundred and fifty thousand with a belly scraper on it and this is fifty. So, I could buy three of these and wear them out before I beat up one of them. And, and that's how I think about, you know, this consuming these. It's just, um, to do the operation.
Any other questions for John about the dump?
I move that we authorize, move that we authorize three installment payments, eighteen thousand nine hundred sixty-one dollars sixty-four cents yearly for a total amount not to exceed fifty-six thousand eight hundred eighty-four dollars ninety-two cents for credit municipal, uh, finance and authorized mayor and/or superintendent of DPW. You sign in all documents, any and all documents necessary to complete the purchase agreement subject to the city attorney of the group, attorney of the group.
Second.
So, moved by Bob, seconded by Steve. All those in favor of the motion as read, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Yep. Um, Joanne was going to, like I said, be here, but since she's not feeling well, do we need to just set this, um, GSAB, um, consideration aside so she can be here?
I think it's a standard and I can explain quite simply. And if council still wants to wait, you can wait.
All right. I'm just going to explain to this choice.
So, the GASP seventy-four, seventy-five, it's actually about, um, our healthcare and our outstanding, uh, our, our future debt that we have with our healthcare for, um, our employees. And so, the state now mandates with our audit that, um, this has to be looked over on our healthcare costs. The auditors that we currently use, use this company to do that part. So, these people, this Watkins and Ross specialize in just the OPE. And, um, we're on the, the detailed year, which is four thousand. And as you can see, the next two years, it'll be thirteen hundred. The last time I looked, um, our big charge was three thousand and our in-between charge was twelve hundred. So, they haven't increased by much. Um, I had inquired with Joanne, um, if we looked elsewhere. She said, honestly, um, this was recommended by our auditors and this is what they specialize and this is, so I've recommended and I support these. So, this is something we're mandated company-wise. This is the company we've been working with with probably the last four years due to the mandates by the state.
It's a yearly audit they have to do.
This is a yearly. This one is the, the deeper end that they have to do. So, this one is a little, the four thousand. Yep. And then, they kind of do like a, a summary audit. They only have to report to the state next year and the next year. And then the third, every three years.
Every three years, there's, there's a forensic audit, say.
Basically, yep. Without Joanne saying her magic words, yes, that's, that's my interpretation. So, if you'd like to wait for her, you can. I just know we're getting closer auditor. They're already requesting our information to start working on it. But I understand if you want to wait until the next meeting to ask her any questions about it because she can explain the details. I didn't bring one of their reports. I could have. Maybe that would have helped.
I did talk to her about that and that's pretty much what she said is that this is the deeper dive. Every three years, the other two are lighter ones. The prices haven't changed terribly, but just like everything else, it's a little higher.
I move that we approve the actuarial, actuarial valuation services for fiscal year ending June thirty, twenty-twenty-one from Watkins, Ross and Company to comply with GASP seventy-four, seventy-five for the amount not to exceed four thousand dollars.
Second.
Larry has moved and Mindy has seconded the motion to approve the, uh, actuarial valuation services as read. All those in favor of that motion as read, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Our next discussion is in regard to, um, propose, um, change in our, uh, charges from, uh, Michael Cluck and Associates who are our labor attorney. And, um, I think each of you have that letter that came from them regarding a change in preferred client rate. Devon did, uh, confirm for me that, um, the numbers that they have in here, our current rate of a hundred and sixty-five per hour has been in effect since two thousand and eleven. She did double check on that. And, um, so, they are proposing that we approve a preferred client hourly rate of one hundred and eighty-five per hour now.
Do you have any idea what their annual hours that they bill us for have been historically? Ballpark, I don't need the exact number.
I want to say when it's in union contracts and that's why we need them. So, you're looking at, you know, we just did a, about three-year union contract.
True.
Um, I want to say, I recall, I want to say she puts in about eight thousand because you never know with union contracts what could happen. We, we go into actual debate back and forth, but I couldn't give you actuals because they weren't really smooth.
And they usually do. But the mayor will have at times when they, she will need the opinion of the labor attorney.
Yep. And I had, I had to call him twice and email him once so far this year. There's been that. Thank you for that.
And I don't, I believe this is very outrageous because this is what labor attorneys are giving right now. We have worked, the city has worked with Cluck and Associates for a very long time. And I've known them since the eighties, so...
Um, Mr. Doudarian has always been right available. Um, if I email him, he gets back with me promptly. When we called him, uh, we actually by email set up a time to do that. Had like a conference call with him. Um, he was very helpful, very informative. Didn't, didn't drag out the conversation, you know, got to the point. So, I mean, I've been pleased with my experience with them so far. Tom Doudarian is the attorney that works with us, yeah.
I move that we authorize the mayor and/or the city clerk to sign the proposed amendment from Michael R. Cluck and Associates, Labor Attorney regarding the increase of the hourly rate from one hundred and sixty-five dollars an hour to the preferred client hourly rate of one hundred and eighty-five dollars per hour.
Second.
Steve has moved and Larry has seconded. And the motion as read. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Back to Devon, possible policy amendment to community room policy.
I reported to you all about the projector and the speakers being in a rental agreement. And I had given you all a copy of the draft of the change that I thought was appropriate to include, um, that it is offered. And if you are happy with that, um, I'm asking you to amend the community room policy.
So, the fee schedule is a part of that policy. We don't have to approve that separately.
The fee schedule is your next.
Oh, it's their separate.
Your separate fees.
I see. All right.
And we, we approve the amendment to the community room policy as presented by the city clerk.
Second.
Larry's moved and Mindy's seconded, uh, that we approve the amendment to the community room policy as presented by the city clerk. All those in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. And now, the fee schedule.
As you can see, I just made a, a very short, um, resolution, which includes that the projector speaker will be seventy-five dollars per day. And again, if you should choose that that is, um, a fair amount to charge people to reserve it, then it would be added on to the website to the fee schedule is where you define that amount along with the application. And I, I will add, if you don't mind, um, those were great recommendations that came out of the last meeting for the actual rental agreement. So, we have included to, um, make it quite clear that the projector is not going to leave the building. And we make it quite clear that you're going to get no technical support. So, anyways, um, I did bring a copy, uh, if, if you're interested in looking at it later or I can email it to you if you want to see the final product that we did on the agreement. But anyway, sorry. Back to the fee schedule. Again, you seem to all agree with what we presented in the last meeting, but if you would like some discussion or changes, this does not have to be done now. The July sixth was just coming, since to, we're closed on Monday to follow through with Tuesday. So, any of this, the fee schedule can be changed also.
Before we do the fee schedule, shouldn't we do the draft of the community room according to our agenda?
The draft? You just did the policy. You just approved that.
Yeah.
The community room?
Okay.
Yep. Larry moved and Mindy seconded. Yeah, we moved them. Any other discussion on the fee schedule? Are we ready to address that with an amendment to the fee schedule? Anybody? Amy?
I move that we adopt the following resolution. Resolve that the City of Perry establish the following fee for equipment rental for use in community room or chambers. Projectors, speakers, seventy-five dollars per day. The adopted hearing shall be effective as of July sixth, twenty-twenty-one.
Second.
Motion by Mindy, seconded by Bob, as read. And those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Now, we have a couple of matters for discussion. The first one, we've, we've talked a little bit about in past meetings and now have, um, paper in front of us that Devon's prepared. Discussion of the employee compensation package. Larry, um, would you like to just maybe tell Mike a little bit about how this came up?
Okay. I certainly can. Back when we were having a discussion about the Blue Cross, uh, policy for the city employees, during that discussion, though not directly related to it, I raised the question based on my past experience at General Motors as to whether or not we did a complete compensation package personalized for our employees. You know, quite often, they, they see what their pay, you'll always see what their paycheck is, but we probably questioned whether or not we really shared specifically, for example, what the city pays for healthcare costs for them.
Sure.
Uh, what we pay in social security and all the other, I call it hidden expenses that go into what their real compensation package is. And questioned whether or not we should embark on having that kind of discussion with the employees and set the exact time, et cetera. So, that really the background that kind of led to what Devon's put together. We have in front of us, I believe, that kind of says, here's what, a personalized package. And I think you did this, Devon, based on last calendar year's information.
Yes. I thought that the only way to show because overtime is actually a benefit. Not everybody, just because you can get paid overtime, just means you get it. So, um, I was trying to give some actuals and figures. So, I went from May to May. I did a fiscal year, so I have one year to actually kind of show employee what they actually were getting paid out in all the different areas that are on the...
Right. Not only for our current employees, but we're also, as you're probably aware, or will become aware, as super comment earlier, we're trying to, you know, hire a treasurer and, you know, the Deputy DPW Superintendent. And they're going to see what their salary will be potentially or their hourly rate will be. And we're going to tell them that they've got healthcare benefits, et cetera. But it doesn't really sync in that those healthcare benefits are probably covered based on some kind of stipulations in terms of when they go into effect. What it really means if they've got a, a family of four, for example. So, I was really trying to convey... So I was really trying to convey the bigger, more complete picture.
And thank you to Devon for, she put in a huge amount of time with these together. So thank you for that.
She thought it was pretty cool, then I needed another table, so I.
Her workspace ran out, so she just opened her drawer and used that for a table, too.
Oh, you're very complete and thorough. And her list goes beyond what I can ever remember getting as a GM employee. It's, yeah, everything.
And I thought it might be. I guess I'm hoping with this conversation, and maybe it should go to committee, I'm not sure, of is, is it too much? And is this going to be with a fiscal? Because that's kind of typically how our evaluations are done. The evaluations run with the fiscal year. Would it be something in that order? So I'm hoping to get some feedback on how to move forward. Can anybody advise, or should this be moved to a committee on those type of details?
I'll give you my thoughts, since I kind of kept this ball rolling. I'd like to see the personnel committee have some discussion on it. I've got a couple of thoughts I'd like to share with the personnel committee. But I would like to see maybe that it's done in conjunction with their annual review. But that was only an input, but certainly would like recommendation from the personnel committee. I think we've got a great start here in terms of, certainly I'm going to, I don't think the personnel committee's been asked for any additional information. They may decide to recommend carrying it back a little bit.
Sure.
To minimize complexity. But it certainly does convey, in my mind, the message of what the city is really paying on behalf of the employees we have.
Sure. And if I can just follow up with that, because we have on the agenda discussion of employee compensation. If we are finished with this discussion, if, in my understanding, with the direction that is created, your mayor could follow through, you wouldn't need an actual council action with it, that I would just put the simple discussion we have, and this would drop off the agenda. Is that, is everybody understanding and okay with that?
So do we have any other discussion? Are you all in favor of referring this matter to the personnel committee? And then putting it in their hands with action to be taken from there? Yes? So if anybody has any input for that committee, you can send me an email, drop me a voicemail, whatever you need to do. And I'll call the personnel committee meeting for all those people who are on that. Okay, I think we're finished with that one then. We'll refer that there. Now we have one more item that I'm kind of excited about. And it has to do with our city website development. Devon, do you want to?
Sure. So we are still with IT, right? And as we have been explaining to mayor, council, that we have been struggling with IT, right, with the different programs that they were using to make them work. We have been with IT, right, for the website? I would have to guess probably six years. I had no glitches until a police department that was using it got hacked. So when that happened, they had to change all their software and their programming. And that's when the program is secure, but it is not friendly according to their capacity. So it's been six months to a year. We keep getting, yep, we're going to get it changed, we're going to get it updated like you want, what you need. In the meantime, IT, right, said, we're good at fixing it when your computer's broke. We're not as fancy at websites. So they got ahold of this company and they have subcontracted with them. They're not going to charge us any more money. Right now, we pay $500 a year to have the website go through IT, right. Now, as you can see, I sent you proposals. Well, as we've all discussed, we would like to see our website change. So we've had two conference calls. And some, a couple of the things that came out of it was that council liked, Lanesburg, I've heard, Williamson, I've heard, and Duran, I've heard. Well, guess who does them? These guys do. So that's where they're getting informed there. And there is a different format to be able to, I'm sorry, I've got my paper here. There's a different format than what actually IT is set up right now. And they said it was a lot friendlier for us as employees to use. And for them, they can work a lot faster on any kind of changes. It is called WordPress. The problem is, is that to, in order to transfer that, there is a cost to move our pages into a company. And that's where I bring these proposals. And that's why I only put this on as a discussion. I do have approval on that, but you notice I didn't even propose a motion. I didn't want to go that far. I know our business and technology have had a lot of insight and opinions about the website. But because it was a dollar amount, I thought it was fair that all council should hear this before details are done. So this page here that you see is them giving us a demo. They took everything we have and are giving us some options of what we can do. And it's not, we've already given them suggestions of, no, that won't work. They want more simple, still too much information. There's duplicate information that they've even suggested right on here. One of the questions that got back to me was, can there be a reminder of something coming off? And they said, because of the ADA compliance, a website has, the format does, no, you cannot put any kind of timers or whistle bells. They said you can put a timer when it should go up, but it won't take it, it won't tell you to turn it off. But I didn't ask that, that was one of the questions that came out through a council member. I am excited. They only did a dummy of one page. And of course, we don't want to look like the websites that you work. But it's going to work a lot like the websites that you work. So the biggest concern that I'm still disputing with them, Paul's the one that brought it up to me, and is, I love that we have a picture. The problem is that when you are on a PC, that's all you are seeing. And if you didn't know our website, you didn't know that our homepage was loaded with information. Because you thought, all you had to do was do the dropdown, you were looking for it in the dropdowns. And the picture was taking away from our information. So again, we're, we're hoping, we've asked them already, that this is too fat. When you're on a PC, if you're showing me what it's going to show on the PC, the immediate thing that comes up, you might get the tail end of this. So we're like, sure, give it.
The other thing in there, again, this has been, like you mentioned, Devon's been in the Business Affairs and Technology Committee. Personally, I'd like to have some more discussion with that group. Because one of the things that in today's technology and day and age is that, not all, but a lot of people, if they go to a website, don't go to it on a PC. They go to it on a tablet or on their phone.
He's assured us that it is ADA phone compliant. It'll, that's what they do. That's the, they actually hit to more that than a PC.
And that was some discussion we had previously. I agree, Shoemaker is the name that I'd gotten when I made some early, you know, formal contacts with the folks at Lanesburg, I know, who had done there. I think they're based in Lansing, actually, or East Lansing, so they're a local, a local company.
Yep. And they're, like I said, they, they just got all of IT, right, contracts, which IT, right, is almost all over the state. They showed us. So for example, apparently Perry Township was using them, but they didn't have IT, right. So theirs is worked that way because they were at the beginning. So I kept asking and they wouldn't answer me. And I said, so if I show you the money, you'll work on this tomorrow?
Yeah.
Because I kept saying, you've taken on all these clients, how long will it take? Well, we got to work on this, 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 what do you want it done? So can I do it tomorrow? So anyways, they're young and smart, and this is what they specialize. So I bring to you, the website is changing no matter what. I'm proposing that you think about it. And if you would, put it on the agenda. What they've advised, I acted as their opinion according to the pages, because you get for all that transfer and the details, to bring it to a WordPress site. And they're advising the silver package will probably be more than suffice of the transformation that would need to happen.
Really?
Which is $1,250.
I thought for sure we need to go gold, but I'm happy you're with silver. It costs less.
Well, you, I mean, you can. And that's, that is, that is just, I mean, they're giving you examples of what a silver and a gold. So that's why I didn't want to, I didn't, I'm not assuming anything tonight.
The one, the one thing, Devon, that I was thinking, because we've offered to the businesses, yes, local businesses, that we can display a page showing all the local businesses with their information, but a link then to their website. And the silver package is up to 20 pages and 75 linked documents. The gold package is up to 125 linked documents. When I sent out that communication to the businesses, I think it was 30 emails. And then I sent 25 hard copy that had to go on the mail because I didn't have their email address. So that's 50, no matter how you slice it, if they all signed up. So if we use, I mean, we'd be close to using all 75 just to set that up and whatever else we're going to link.
But they're talking about documents. I know it says links, but it's still, it's still.
So it's still just documents?
It's still a page, it's a page, it's a page, because we can go back and forth.
Okay.
Asking that question.
On the gold, though, they say online fillable forms. Does that mean you could, we could set up eventually having filling permits they can fill out, or a resident can fill out and submit it through the website?
He asked, yeah, that you can type it right there and.
That's what it says here, I just, I have no idea.
Well, you asked two questions, kind of. And we did ask that, because we caught right after that. Now, the good thing about it, and this is what I'm recommending, and I don't know if it's going to work out or not, is that they do the fillable form. Dorian asked, can it be sent to our city email? So they fill it out and you know how you go to some websites? And then that's what you were asking. Yes, it's fillable, yes, we can create the documents, no, we can't.
You can't get it automatically sent to click and email, email something?
You would have to save as the PDF and attach it to an email, the closest that you could, send it to the city.
Okay.
So you can, but you got to do the work. And I don't know if we would just direct people, I know how to do that. I mean, if, if I know if I can save something as a PDF, I know I can just attach it to my work, you know?
Yeah, okay, work just right.
Because there's a lot of state documents that are fillable, just like that. And I save them as PDF. Where it's ready to go with their lives.
Can we upgrade our package if we, if we did sign up for the silver and find out that we need some of the other stuff? Can we upgrade that, did they say?
I would say the gold package is more to your liking. And they were just going with the basic, that was just a quick advice. That was, they'd be happy to give you the gold package.
Oh, I'm sure they would, cost $500 more.
I know, I have a question also, so I'm not by any sense an IT guy. 50 pages or 125 linked pages? If we put our ordinances on there, is each page of the ordinance book a page? Or is the whole document in one page?
That's posted by a whole different website. It's literally just, just a link is what that is. But that's a good question. No, and we did, we kind of struggled with this. This is just kind of, now, the biggest thing that is going to affect, and is going to be a discussion, is we have, what, what we're going to run into is the history that's on there. Because every time you have another link or another, that's another page that you can drop down, you can drop down, it's not necessarily that document. You guys are looking at a piece of paper, every single time you're looking at a piece of paper, they're looking at how many pages, meaning, how many times do you drop down and you're on another page and another, you know what I mean, through the website? And so there was question whether that's enough room or whether we will have to condense and only allow a couple of years of events. We still haven't quite got the answer even of the minutes. I mean, we've, we've been making them available. And I think they're available since she started it, I think, 2014. So that's quite a few years of minutes that are available. And that, that will be a discussion. Things like that is going to be more of discussion of, of cost, of whether it can be moved.
If they get archived somehow, and then you can get to that archival form.
It still might be a cost, I don't know.
Well, I'm sure that there's always a cost.
That's where you're getting in the details.
Always a cost. So that's, that's gold, I'll say.
And the structure and all that kind of stuff. So these guys are really good about doing Zoom meetings. We could set something up, you know, with the Business Affairs and Technology Committee. Or I could see if they wanted, would want to bring, do a presentation and get more, I could ask that. But I'm saying this is, it's changing no matter what. And then there are options to change, to change.
Any other recommendations? I'd like to suggest that we give the Business Affairs and Technology Committee an opportunity to digest that Devon's involved in more detail. Mindy, myself, Randy's not here, so he hasn't heard any of the discussion. And then we give an update at the next council meeting. And then maybe, if appropriate, that our first meeting in August, that we decide whether or not we want to have Shoemaker come in and give a brief presentation.
Sure.
Based on what's been carved out. You know, because originally, back a few months ago, many of us were saying it's time to get a new web developer. And we kind of backed off from that a bit.
Because we were seeing changes.
And it sounds like now we're a crossroad that says, something's going to change based on business relationship changes with IT, right? Therefore, let's, let's dive back in and see what the smart, you know, best approach to take is.
I agree with Larry. I think you should go to that committee, and then the committee comes through with recommendations to the council. So give us, give two recommendations, X and Y and cost for each one. Because we're going to spend too much time with six or seven people here asking our own little questions.
Yep. I totally agree. I'm going to just say this, and I don't think Business Affairs and Technology will have a problem, but if you want them to come to council. I've looked at their area and all their new customers, and I'm wondering if that's why they do Zoom meetings. So I don't know if, if they can physically get here. But we could try with the projector and actually do it through computer, I guess, would be the option. And I know that's really minor to speak of, but I really would like them, they could answer all your technical questions the last minute. And I, I just, I'm tech just so far, and this is a website. I am excited. Like I said, just, just simply the city resources, we got rid of that. Again, we want to. Again, we want to, I really, I said, we can combine this one. We don't need six faces for news, 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 important information, important information. We only need two. So I was like, make those two, move your calendar to the side, get rid of the resource. Because Kyle just, I, I almost had nightmares of what he was saying because he couldn't find what we're doing in them, like we spent so much time informing people on that front page and they can't find it. People are lazy and they want, they want stuff right there. So we've already, we've already spoke to them. So we're already, and bringing it in. And that was just one meeting and one page, just the front page. We still, there are things in there that I suggested. I did make sure that Dory supported it. And I'm like, I don't think it needs to be here. Can we make these, I finally asked him, I said, what do you guys call it all? I said, I just call them little, you know, thing to do, a very simple deal. And the quick links is all there are. And I said, I think it would be impressive on different departments that they're correlating with, that that's what it's highlighted on. And we discussed one of the situations about, we pulled up the DPW is what we did. Because some of our quick links go to the DPW and then you gotta read until you get to that section. And so one of the things that I asked him if we could do is instead of having it on the front page, first of all, you could have, we, we have like important information, like if it's yard waste, the new calendar is out or something like that. It would bring you to that page, but it would bring it to another quick, quick link of that subject. So instead of when you go on the DPW page right now, you read all the information, you would have quick links of highlighted, you know, titled subjects. Does that make sense? And that was only in an hour conversation. So there would be, I'm hoping that after a conversation with Business and Technology and kind of talking tonight, that you would kind of let us work with them and then present to you tweak and be happy that way, is my hope and plan. Any suggestions or opinions? That's after you say yes. We're not even that far yet. But I am excited.
Do we need to have a motion to go forward with what, anything so far?
I think the recommendation to send it to committee like we just did the last one is, is fair enough. I, I just, I'm getting excited and talking in the future, so I'll stop.
The only thing I would add to the committee is that citizen involvement or something, citizen new.
Citizens guide.
Make that new residents. We have a lot of new residents here. And I don't think they're all aware of the, you know, new things like bags relief and those kinds of things. So I still would love to see us do some sort of new resident, welcome back.
Well, there's residents.
I can make that little icon that looks like a welcome.
You still got your dropdowns on top.
Some, just new, you know, welcome packet or something. I just, I have, just next to my house, in the last year, I have three. And I heard the one, there's another one kitty corner for me that's leaving soon. So that'll make four.
Yes and no, but I'm going to find whatever pleases you is what's going to be on there. So I, I, I will make sure that we put that on there. But even the dropdowns, I have suggested that maybe we have too many titles even for our dropdowns.
Yep. You don't want it too busy either, because you're right, people, if I can't find it in two seconds, I'm done.
If we can get bigger, because we have less dropdowns, maybe, maybe I can come to you and me and they'll see resident because now it's bigger to see as a dropdown, is, is my thought process. Because a lot of things in here are rentals or something mandate. But like the IRS warrants about scams, I'm like, yeah, that's old news, get that out of there. That's, that's news, it's not, it's not equipped. But they, all they did was is gave us a dummy run. They took everything we had and said, here's what we did. I said it to quiet, anyways, I'm excited. But you're right, and it is that feedback. But I do, I am excited about that information.
So we're going to hand this off to our Business Affairs and Technology Committee. Larry is the chair of that, so there you go.
Yep, I've got one other question for council in that regard. And I'll look for some feedback in terms of, we're doing all of this to help keep our residents informed and as a source. One of the things I want to talk, we suggested to talk about within the committee is whether or not we should solicit an informal half a dozen residents if they would be willing to come and sit with the committee for half an hour, an hour. We've got new young fellow, actually, Zach Muller, who's on the planning commission currently. Certainly far more tech savvy than I am. Whether someone like that, someone maybe that's our age that... So we're trying to, as we do this, let's embark on making certain we're hitting the customers that we're trying to satisfy as well. So my real question to the council is, everybody okay with if the committee decides to do that in a mini ad hoc forum?
I think you can.
I'm assuming you can.
Whenever you can get resident involvement.
This, that might be something, something we want to put on the community page. The very community page is looking for...
So you would want a public meeting?
Is a suggestion. Do you think that would have to be a public meeting? They can just attend, he said it's ad hoc on the committee.
But when you want committee, when you want community, you should open it up to anybody and everybody have an opinion. So it was a suggestion. Instead of picking and choosing who you think might have some input of it, you can still invite those people. But if, if you're serious about getting community input, you should probably open it up.
We don't know what judges we have out there either. That's one thing, you don't know what judges we have out there.
All I was really doing was tossing out the idea that we get some, as we're embarking on this, that we get some community input, because they're really the customers that, it's not what I can see and find or what any of us here can see and find. That new resident, can he or she find the information they're looking for? If we miss that mark, we're spending a lot of time and money.
I did ask how many hits do we get? So the news, the current site we have does not count hits. But the IT Right original one we have, we could actually talk how many hits and what people are coming to our website for. So I was kind of bummed to hear that, that we, since IT Right did that switch to these guys, they have no, they have no information of how our website is being hit. You know what I mean when I say that, right?
Is it possible to get like an app for a phone? Like a City of Perry app that would have all that?
I can ask them. But it, like I said, it used to, I used to be able to see it. It would tell me. Our events and our elections were hit the hardest. So hundreds of thousands of people, that's what would be our top hits. And since that happened, they've had to change. I don't know if the ADA compliant doesn't allow it, if it won't function anymore. I, I don't know why, but I will definitely ask to see if we can get a side app to work on it.
I wouldn't be surprised if there's a privacy issue. Because if you can count hits, you can probably track who. And so you can't, that's, that's...
They track.
Homeland Security says.
They may have changed it, but when I had my own company and I had a website, they tracked unique website, you know, IP addresses. That's all it did. So they could tell you, you had 100 people came, but 10 of them were, had been there before. Or whatever number that is.
It would be great to at least know who, if people, if people are looking. I mean, that's, that's the thing you always wonder about. Are we doing all this work and two people are going to use it?
So what I say though, Larry, we're back to the residents and say that is getting hit. And I have to swallow pride and say, okay, you're right, these people who... That's what I was hoping for, that the hits by showing that tells you what you make the easiest for the person to find.
Right.
So I get what you're saying.
Okay, so we'll refer that off to the Business Affairs and Technology Committee and then we'll report back to council at the first meeting of August. What's the recommendations?
My recommendations, we'll give you a status report at our next meeting.
Okay.
And hopefully come forward with, it'll be a progress report in two weeks, but...
That sounds good. Appreciate it. Next on our agenda, any other business that may come before council? Does anybody have anything they need us to be aware of? Council discussions and observations. I do have one under that, and we kind of touched on it, special meetings thing. Our special meeting that we had been having the open forum at 6:30 on the second, third, we have every month. Our first one, we had participation. The third one, we had a smidge. And then we, there were two or three times when we had nothing. We were about ready to decide do we want to keep doing this when we said, oh, well, let's start at 6 and bring in the business people. And we did get four plus three participants also. So a total of seven people who came to that 6 o'clock time. Like Larry said, the, the Business Affairs and Technology Committee is hoping to get the businesses more involved in community and with each other through the Events Committee. Because that seems to be, every time we've started talking about anything with business, that seems to be that what comes out is the center of the conversation. So that brings to my mind, do we want to continue with that open forum meeting at 6:30 on a routine basis or just set that aside and call on when we have something to address? We have public participation during our regular meetings. We have open, you know, public comments a couple of times. And we can talk to them, we've set that up, so it can be a discussion. But what are your thoughts? Rather than automatically going every second meeting of the month? Or what, what do you want to do? I'm happy to do whichever.
I believe going into the summer months, more people are going to be on vacations and doing things. So it may be better suited in the late fall, winter months to do that, or maybe quarterly.
Okay, there is a note, yeah.
I would say quarterly, probably. The most, especially like right now is hard for me. I was surprised I made it here last night.
I know, you can fly that.
Other thing might consider soon when you do your mayor, from the mayor's desk note, would be to reinforce the public comment opportunity at council meetings. And it is an opportunity for hearing from the residents and business people. And that we can have a limited amount of dialogue during that time. Because I think there may still be this thing with, I can come and speak, but I won't get any feedback.
Okay, that's a good idea. Any other thoughts? So I will not routinely call a special meeting for that open forum next, this month, nor in August. And we can see in September if that's when we want to start then and do quarterly or... But if at any time, somebody knows of a topic that needs to be addressed in that setting, let me know. Okay, good, thank you. So the next meeting, do we have any agenda items for the next meeting?
Mayor, I have one.
Yes, Kyle.
I'd like to put on there the proposed change for the speed limit on school property.
Oh, yes.
I will not be here for that meeting, but I'll have some group together for someone to, to discuss.
Okay. So Kyle would like to have proposed change for the speed limit on the school property for the next meeting, so in two weeks. Anything else for the next agenda? Jeff?
It's not necessarily about the agenda. Can I make a comment?
Absolutely.
So the guy who's here with the, with the water service lines and the sewer service lines, I know firsthand what it's like to tell someone that it's their responsibility. I'm not endorsing it or saying that, there's local communities, City of Howell, City of Burton has partnered with, with this program. I, I believe that it's a good thing. I did some quick math, if you did both water and sewer in 20 years at today's money, you'd spend about $3,500 from what he said. So that's, I just, I guess I'm asking if council considers when it's on the agenda. That's just my, thank you.
Thank you, John. Let's do put possible approval of NLC program on the next agenda. Make sure you read your stuff and we can discuss it next time and see what you want to do. Anything else? In that case, 9:05 in the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all, thank you, Mike.
Yes, thanks for having me.